...if you would please rise and join us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have a couple items on the agenda that I'd like to get a motion to change the agenda and pull under B, police item about the shotgun.
No.
Nope, excuse me.
That's big person.
Sorry. And down under zoning, under C, resolution forty-six seventy-three, we'd like to pull that too. So is there a motion to amend the agenda removing those two items?
Move.
Second.
Mr. Mearsclaw?
Yeah.
Mr. Gabbard?
Yeah.
Mr. Wade?
Yeah, did you get those ones?
Sure did, thank you.
And then we have the minutes from the January point six regular meeting. You have had a chance to take a look at these, if I have any changes, additions, alterations. Very good, is there a motion to approve the minutes as presented?
So move.
Second.
Mr. Gabbard?
Yeah.
Mr. Mearsclaw?
Yeah.
Mr. Wade?
Yeah. And we have the fiscal officers' report?
Just for the record, I wondered that the board and staff have received the updated appropriation status reports, the revenue status reports, and the fund status reports, which shows us with eleven million, four hundred and sixty-three thousand, one hundred and eleven dollars and twenty-seven cents in our checking and investment accounts.
Very good. And we've the current bills, we have had a chance to take a look at these bills, if I have any questions? Okay, so a question to pay the bills. So move.
Second.
Mr. Mearsclaw?
Yeah.
Mr. Gabbard?
Yeah.
Mr. Wade?
Yeah. Anything else under fiscal business?
No, sir.
Okay. We do have a public hearing tonight to consider some changes in our township zoning resolutions. Is there a motion to recess our regular meeting at, we'll call it five twenty, five thirty-five? And open the public hearing?
So move.
Second.
Mr. Gabbard?
Yeah.
Mr. Mearsclaw?
Yeah.
Mr. Wade?
Yeah. Mr. Paul?
All right, sir, just to let you know some background briefly, this was an outgrowth of an individual wanted to have a brewery in our jurisdiction, wanted to make sure where to place it. That started the process, then went through several revisions at the zoning commission level, and you have your document in front of you today. Ultimately, we're establishing the ability to have a bar and a brew pub in a B two, so more intensive classification, taking it out of the B one, specifying a ten thousand gallon minimum. Different troll between, that's, my tongue work really good. Being the cutoff point between what is going to be a bottler versus a regular distillery. And the opportunity for a brew pub to actually be a micro-distillery in the jurisdiction, everything above that, because you look at Ohio, it's a thirty-one million gallon difference. So we're saying ours is a ten thousand, so we're not going to have a large brewery come in, establish underneath the B two, it's actually going to be placed into an M one, just with those locations. In the process of doing that, there was an awful lot of discussion about what our restaurants should be, what they are, how they work, and the like, those are more clearly defined now. And the ultimate discussion that took the longest for the zoning commission was determining how to do a drive-through facility, casually, it's a drive-through. Well, at their level, they wanted to make sure of how it was going to work, who was going to be in charge of it, and ultimately it came down to putting those conditionally used within our commercial districts. So the Board of Zoning Appeals will look at those as a case by case, making sure that all of the site planned is taken care of in a public form. So that is something new. So to go further through the documents, as I said, we struck caffeine bar from the B one, adding in sit-down restaurant, fast food restaurant, outdoor dining restaurant, and then looking at the B two, having the brew pub added in amongst all the other restaurants. But then, chapter sixteen, they did provide guidance, they've been in zoning commission on some drive-through facility minimums for stacking and the like to help the B Z A, but that's where they stopped. I can answer questions? When this went through, one kind of regional plan, was it a different version of what you have? And part of the discussion was making sure there was clarity between classifications. I believe that that has been accomplished, and this went before zoning commission. Ultimately, they came up with the current draft. So I can answer questions in detail. If you have any.
I looked at that. Much better. Good work.
We hope, we hope that clarity will come from that and that everyone have an understanding.
Basically, this is just re-clarifying, defining what is what in these areas?
Correct. What we had before was just caffeine bar, we didn't see the fine bar, we now define a bar. Restaurants, the only restaurant we talked about was a drive-in restaurant, so the old Frisch's, Sonic type of facility was the only restaurant that we ever envisioned having. So we now talk about those in greater detail so that we can truly talk apples to apples, and the Board of Zoning Appeals can then look at drive-throughs for all facilities. If we want a direct leader to have a drive-through, a coffee house, those types of things will all fall into place. Therefore.
Very good. Any other questions for Jack? Okay, is there a motion to approve or deny?
Yeah, since, if you could ask just for my clarification, if anyone in the audience has any comments?
If I have any comments or questions for Jack?
So the eight stacking means they gotta have, be able to have eight vehicles in line before they stack in spaces?
Yes, it's counted from the pickup window, so eight back from that.
Counting the pickup window is eight or nine with the pickup window? Sorry?
No, no, I believe it starts at the pickup window.
I read it as eight, that's what I think.
Eight.
So it's eight including the pickup window? Okay.
Of course, it's critical for when they design and give you the total layout, that they, that they obviously have enough room in whatever facility they're in to stack that much.
Yeah, and part of why the zoning commission went to the Board of Zoning Appeals is an avenue to try to address this, is they had a small document. It was everything and anything, you wanted to look at diagrams and how to do this, and they thought, okay, we can design it all, but at the end of the day, it's probably not going to work because there's going to be something special. And since we have so many islands, so to speak, of, or business nodes of business classification surrounded by some type of residential, there's always something that came in play that says, okay, we don't want to be next to residential, but it may in fact for a specific site need to be. So instead of saying it can never be next to, knowing that those are the center of the donut, we wanted to make sure that those were given further review, so that the residents truly felt as if it was something that could fit within the neighborhood if it's appropriate.
Any other questions? Anything else?
You didn't put any height limits on the pickup window. Are you assuming that everybody's going to be in a car or a small pickup or a?
That's left up at this point in time to the property. We're not putting any caps on that.
Okay.
So if they wanted to be for?
So we couldn't come in with our straight truck?
If they wanted, if they wanted to accommodate you, they would accommodate.
It'd be a before and after.
Okay, thank you.
I'm laughing, because you'd be surprised how many times I paid for awnings and canopies at brass drive-throughs, just like that, and people going, they'll rent a U-Haul and they don't know anything about. Yep.
That's why I asked.
Any other questions? Okay, is there a motion to adjourn the public hearing and go back into regular?
Second.
Mr. Mearsclaw?
Yeah.
Mr. Gabbard?
Yeah.
Mr. Wade?
And now, is there a motion to approve or deny forty-six sixty-nine?
So move.
To approve. To approve. So, or second.
Mr. Gabbard?
Yeah.
Mr. Mearsclaw? Mr. Wade?
Yeah. Anything under unfinished business you might have got? Under administration, new business, we have three resolutions that deal with street lighting in Whining Creek, section one, section four A, and section four B. Jeff, can we think we is okay to, these are pretty much cookie cutters, it looks to me like?
They are, they're Jack's product.
Any reason why we can't do this in one motion?
The lawyer's giving some noise over here. Probably want to do.
Sorry. Yeah, exactly. What Shakespeare said, kill us all.
Is there a motion to approve of forty-six seven?
Second. Second.
Mr. Mearsclaw?
Yeah.
Mr. Gabbard?
Yeah.
Mr. Wade?
Yeah. And is there a motion to approve forty-six seventy-one?
So move.
Second.
Mr. Gabbard?
Yeah.
Mr. Mearsclaw?
Yeah.
Mr. Wade?
Yeah. And is there a motion to approve forty-six seventy-two? So move.
Second.
Mr. Mearsclaw?
Yeah.
Mr. Gabbard?
Yeah.
Mr. Wade?
Yeah. And Police District, we have the two thousand and fifteen annual report.
Page of the report talks about something we're kind of proud of and hope we can continue the tradition. Twenty-fourteen, out of Cincy Burgs Magazine, Clear Creek was rated number three in the tri-state area. They, they look at fifty communities every year, and we've consistently been in the top ten for the safest communities to live in. Twenty-fourteen, we were number three. I like to say we're number two, Terrace Park was always number one, but they don't report any crime because they don't have enough to report. So they get it number one slot by default, so. On the heels of that, there was a recent thing from Biz Journal, it's out of the Dayton Journal, that talked about a statewide survey that had been done, and I think they looked at two hundred and twenty-five communities in that. We were the thirteenth safest community in the state of Ohio, by statistics. If they, they broke it down further into mid-sized city or mid-sized communities, and we were number six, if you break it down until like the summer of those. There were some townships in that mix, not just cities, so. And so, proud of those distinctions, and hopefully can continue that, so I just want to bring that to your attention. As far as last year, some successes, some areas we still need to work on. Domestic violence in the township has decreased by about sixty-one percent in a three-year span. Hoping that we've had some of that uptick in the past, and we kind of thought maybe some economy issues and so forth, money problems with the recession and so forth created some of those pressures. But that's decreased by sixty-one percent. Burglaries have, in a three-year period, have decreased by fifty-two percent. And we look at that pretty hard, because that's one of the biggest violations the citizens can get, and they break into their house and rock room, and trauma that's done as a result of that. We have a pretty extensive vacation home check program, and not on wood, and hopefully the trend continues to, for eight years under that program, anybody's had a house on that program that has not been broken into. And we had about seven thousand residents, households, in two thousand and fourteen that asked for that service. So it affects a long-term community. I was signing some of the forms today, and we had one of our residents gone for seven days, and we checked their house twenty times, just that one resident. So the officers are very good, smell of sleep, rain or hail, they get out and check the houses and make sure that it's okay, and I think that's part of the reason that we see some decline in our burglaries. Where we still need to work, we've had a three-year period, we've had a sixty-one percent increase in drug issues, and it's just hitting everybody. So, and unfortunately, the thing that goes along with that thefts to support the drug habit, we've had a twenty-three percent increase in the last three years on just simple thefts, car thefts, and then get to go sell, it didn't involve breaking into some place to do it, so. Traffic crashes were up from twenty thirteen to twenty fourteen by about fourteen percent. I think some of that was last year's bad weather, so we'll see how that pans out this year, but it's almost just a wonder last year. And then sex offenses and rape issues, I mentioned in the past, we've, these young kids with the social media and stuff, it's just disturbing to watch this, our sex offenses increased by twenty-five percent in three years, and a lot of it is the social media stuff. Rapes have increased by fifty percent by number, and that's a little bit misgiving in the sense that if you're under thirteen and there's contact between, even though it may be consensual, it's still considered rape, and some of our rapes have been under that classification, but they're still classified and charged as rape. But just disturbing to see that trend continue with social media and youngsters getting into that. Actually Sergeant Corneille is preparing, I think we're going to do some community training events, and he's trying to prepare our social media things, we've invited some of the citizens in this year, and we've talked about the hazards of kids with iPads and computers and so forth, so. Other than that, we did about thirty-four thousand calls for service last year. And that's about it. Any questions, I'll be wanting to answer.
Okay. Anybody have any questions for Chief at this time?
The four thousand call increase, what primarily was the four thousand call increase ever prior year?
I'd have to go back and break it down, Mr. Mearsclaw. It's, I just have the total numbers today, I can get that broken down for you.
Maybe I'd kind of like to, I'd see what all that is, just to see. Okay, anybody have any other questions? Okay, we also, Police Department, we have a purchase recommendation for the crime lab annual fee. Anybody have any questions for the Chief about that? Is there a motion to, do you want to talk about that at all?
Every year, we contract with Miami Crime Lab to do our testing processes. We are looking at it a little bit. The labs are really getting inundated, and there's, there's a committee now that's looking into some of the labs, trying to bring one this way, we're trying to work out a deal through the state with Miami Crime Lab to impact some of these fees that are being charged. This is pretty similar to what we've had in the past, six thousand eight hundred and fifteen dollars, I think it's been pretty close to the past. Miami Crime Lab does some things that BCI and some of the labs don't do, and it is close and convenient. So I, Mr. Cameron and I talked about this, I want to stick with it at least one more year, watch the trend as to how this plays out with the state, and there was some talk like they said they may build a lab down here, which would reduce some of our costs, but there's a lab in Cincinnati fighting against that, so. I would just ask that we continue with Miami Crime Lab at least for one more year, and let's watch how this plays out, if there isn't cheaper way to go about doing it.
Is this based on our population?
It's based upon the submittals we give every year. And they kind of give an average of how many we do and so forth, and, you know, I believe it's based on the kind of population, on the work they do for us.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve?
So move.
Second.
Mr. Gabbard?
Yeah.
Mr. Mearsclaw?
Yeah.
Mr. Wade?
And then we have Drug Task Force Annual Fee, the Warren County Drug Task Force.
The Drug Task Force is a company-based unit, we use them for drug issues and some other liquor issues and things like that. We couldn't do it as cheap in-house as they give it to us, so, although we can do some of those smaller things in-house and save a little bit of money, it's still, I think it's still valued to continue using them in our testing work group. Again, the fee is eight thousand seven hundred and forty-seven, that is based on population, but later they'll charge us the full population, so I'll keep them all with their number, so.
Yeah, actually it's quite a bit less.
Correct, yeah, so. This may be a little bit more than last year, I think, if I remember correctly, but eight thousand forty-seven dollars is what I'd ask that we continue that relationship of, that we can do.
What are some of the services that they, they provide?
If we, if we have some small event that we want to work on, so we've got a gas station here that's selling underage liquor or so forth, they'll loan us equipment to do that in-house if they're too busy to get to it, and we've utilized them in the past. We've done a couple of rounds where we went to all the liquor establishments that were selling prior to graduation or proms or whatever, and worked on them, that we've utilized their equipment, you know, a piece of equipment would cost us six, six or seven thousand dollars, the wires and so forth that they loaned out. They loan us the vehicles on occasion if we need that. If we have a house that we're looking at in the community that's a drug issue, we report to them where that's at, and we work in conjunction with them, they have resources to try to get in that house, help us either with search warrants or undercover buys, and they supply the money for those things as it goes. So if we have to buy drugs, that money comes from them out of their budget, obviously we're paying part of that to be part of it, but pretty helpful. We, we, especially with the sex brands I talked about and the underage stuff, they have now the complete lab there, where we would normally have to take that to some other facility and probably pay for that. They can analyze all the cell phones, computers, and you go along these search warrants for this underage stuff and the social media stuff, it's not uncommon to have two or three iPads, a couple of cell phones and a computer, and that work is just voluminous as heck, it's, it's, takes a lot of time, and they've got the specialty equipment, tons of thousands of dollars of equipment to help analyze that, so it is a value, what we get out of the use of it.
Very good. Is there a motion to approve the renewal of the Drug Task Force?
Second.
Mr. Mearsclaw?
Yeah.
Mr. Gabbard?
Yeah.
Mr. Wade?
Yeah. And then we have the shotgun replacement.
Weapons are recommended to be replaced every ten years. We replaced handguns, we replaced patrol rifles, this is my eighth year, I think. The shotguns are probably twelve to fourteen years old, so they're past the recommended life to hang on to those. So, and we have one each car, so we're asking that we be allowed to replace that last remaining cycle of weapons that we haven't done yet. Key Source is a, is a rep of Remington, and if you're going to buy shotguns from Remington, there's only two places to do that, Key Source is one, and there's another one someplace else, and I can't remember the name off the top of my head. Everybody else has to buy from Key Source and jack the price up, so Key Source is a direct price from the factory for that. So it, we, we just, I had one of the bid came down that wasn't even close, and it was a third party having to buy through Key Source or the other organization to do it, so it wasn't even sensible to bring it up, so. To replace those is ten thousand eight hundred and fifty-eight dollars and forty cents, I'd ask that we replace the shotguns.
Any questions for the Chief about that?
Are those replaced due to age or are they shells going through them?
Both, you know, they kind of have a life expectancy, you kind of want to get rid of them until one of them blows up in your hand, so, I mean, we're still operating with them. Ours is a lot of range time, obviously. We have like three range events every year, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen policemen, nineteen policemen firing gun, shells through those guns after that period of time, it's time to start looking. As I said, we've gone past the recommended lifespan of that, and I need to replace those, so.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the purchase of the? How many, how many are there in one each car, Ken?
Twelve is what I can add. So I think it's one in each car, or eleven cars and one spare, just in case we have one big now, or about the big, you have a shooting, you have to isolate that weapon and replace it with something during that period of time, so you always like to have one or two spares or something, so. I am looking at the possibility of trying to get Key Source to purchase those, use those.
Obviously, we can't put those on bill deals.
Right, yeah, and they can, they can take parts and do whatever they can do with them and make something out of it, so.
Right.
So, and there may be something, I'll come back later on, we can try to do that, but we are in talks about what they might be able to do with our old weapons, if there was any value to them on the backside.
Okay. Very good. Is there a motion to approve the purchase of the shotguns?
So move.
Second.
Mr. Gabbard?
Yeah.
Mr. Mearsclaw?
Yeah.
Mr. Wade?
Yeah. And the monthly report, Chief?
Probably the biggest thing I see between January this year and January of last year is our calls have gone up twenty-one percent comparing January twenty-fourteen to January twenty-fifteen. I don't know what that, what that's caused by just yet, I'll take a look at it for you, but I hope that's not a trend we're looking at for the year, until we're planning the first month.
Okay. Anybody have any other questions for the Chief?
Just a comment, congratulations. I got, I got several emails from our community, from the Nathan Business Journal. Cut and pasted into the email, bragging on our police department, so.
I appreciate it, and I did get phone calls, and some Facebook posts and texts thanking us for providing a place safer for people living, so we're proud of it, and hope we can continue it, so we're going to try our darkest.
Appreciate it.
Good job. Anybody have anything other questions for the Chief, can we move to the fire district? Okay. And do you have your two thousand and fifteen annual report?
Uh, yes, sir. It's a busy year for us.
It'd be two thousand and fourteen. Since fifteen years.
I'm going to blame that on Ron.
Are you going to blame that on the drug?
The drug, the Drug Task Force?
That too, yeah.
Is that like a drone but different? Sorry.
It's all good. This year was a busy year for us, we finished out at two thousand eight hundred and ninety-four calls, it's two hundred above last year, and it's the third highest year we've had since nineteen ninety-seven, call volume wise, for us. We experienced ninety-six structure fires last year, majority of those could be contained to the incipient phase or to a single room and contents, and because of our response time, we were able to keep those from progressing further. Our department was classified as an ISO class three department. We took the information that we gathered through the study when they came to see us and already started implementing plans to begin January one this year. We repositioned some of our staff from office positions to line positions, so we can gain our ladder truck back in service on more days. With that, it didn't cost us an increase in manpower just to reallocate those personnel. Our hope is down the road to increase us to an ISO class two down the road. We've also added into our annual report the number of days that we keep apparatus out of service due to mechanical failure. That way, people can better realize why we keep a reserve fleet ready to go, a reserve ambulance and a reserve fire engine. We experienced about four months of downtime per year for a fire engine and for an ambulance, cumulative for those vehicles. I'll be more than happy to answer any other questions you might have about the annual report. I think you'll find a lot of detail as to the expenses and type of calls that we see.
I don't, I don't think I actually have a copy of that.
Email.
Ron probably. Did he?
Yeah, they emailed, you emailed that, well.
Not his. I thought Ron was going to distribute that, but it's, it's a lot of pages and a lot of pictures.
Maybe the one, maybe, because my email was messed up, maybe the one you sent, at his request to me, had it with it. Because that was the one you sent to staff.
Just guessing. Hey.
Make sure you get a copy of it, yeah.
Appreciate that, thank you.
And we have some grants, so anybody have any questions for the Chief about these annual reports?
That you haven't seen?
Or is it?
Is it coming on your website? Because if it's on the website, then you can just call it up off the website.
I will be posting it on the website, I wait until I present it to the board in case if there was anything that you wanted to add or subtract at first.
Not at this time, apparently.
And I'll forward an email tonight to everyone, so you can have electronic copy of it.
I'm going to have the Drug Task Force look into this.
Awesome. I can meet it all the way home.
Good idea.
I've got to pay for that?
And they go again.
We have a request for the grants of submitted recommendation to High Department of Public Safety.
This is an annual item, we apply for it, there's no cost for the township within us.
Okay, is there a motion to direct the Chief to allow him to apply for that?
Second.
Mr. Mearsclaw?
Yeah.
Mr. Gabbard?
Yeah.
Mr. Wade?
Yeah. And we have an orientation recommendations for three individuals, Lieutenant Justin Bueller, Larry Carman, and Fire Fighter Paramedic Jacob Roop.
All three have done well during their orientation period, and we'd like to retain them as permanent employees. Is there anything I might be able to help answer with the pay structure or anything like that? Questions that might need?
I sent you an email that said if you could send me their salary along with their hourly, now on, just to make sure you and I are on the same page, but we're good.
All right, I suppose, Council, we should make these in three different records.
Or you can wait till two thousand sixteen. It's going to be the last time you enjoy this music, it's getting longer.
Is there a motion to move Justin Bueller to a permanent full-time lieutenant?
So move.
Second.
Mr. Gabbard?
Yeah.
Mr. Mearsclaw?
Yeah.
Mr. Wade?
Yeah. I guess we should probably put in there with the appropriate.
I'll take care of that, yeah.
Then with Lieutenant Larry Carman, also move him to a permanent full-time lieutenant. So move.
Second.
Mr. Mearsclaw?
Yeah.
Mr. Gabbard?
Yeah.
Mr. Wade?
Yeah. And Fire Fighter Paramedic Jason Roop has a permanent full-time firefighter paramedic?
Jacob.
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 Jason. So moved.
Second.
Mr. Gabbard?
Yeah.
Mr. Mearsclaw?
Yeah.
Mr. Wade?
Yeah.
Okay.
Then we have resignation recommendations for, except resignation of permanent full-time firefighter paramedic Matthew Cole. paramedic Matthew Cole, and James Gabbard, and, and the time clerk.
With my annual report, I was going to start off that we had stabilized our workforce and slowed down on the leaving, and I kind of shot that statement out of the water, so.